Metal benches for sale. They took away the nice concrete ones that was up on the square.
This is what the Scottish City Council ordered. The case given by myself and the pledge by Mr. Kirshler. Heavenly Father, as we come before you this evening and gather together, we call to lift up your name and give you thanks and praise for all things that you provide for us. We ask you to continue to watch over this city, its citizens, our youth, our leaders, and our workers. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
I plead with the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda tonight is to discuss Jackson County tourism grant applications. This is an application from the Chamber of Commerce to sponsor Heartlight Anglers Bass Championship. You have a copy of the application in your packet. Mr. Parsons is not here this evening, but does anybody have any discussion on this topic? I will say that, on a little bit of a different topic, I attended in the mayor's stead, he wasn't able to make it last week, but I extended welcome to the Anglers Choice tournament, which was the one that we partnered with the Chamber on a few months ago. I think we put in $7,500 from the Chamber, matched the rest. They had 574 anglers. I attended the banquet, spent some time talking to those folks, and had the same question for everybody. Where are you from? How long have you been here? And where are you staying? Most of the people that I talked to were from upper Midwest, Indiana, Chicago, Missouri, places like that. They had been here for, some of them as long as a week, some of them for four or five days. Nice, nice folks, enjoyed spending time with them. I met one group of individuals when I said, "Where are you staying?" One of the people from Indiana said, "Well, I'm retiring here in a few years, and I've already bought a house, so we're staying there." I gave him a hug. I like to hear that, but that's just, I think that that was an prudent investment for us. I think it brought people into the area and I'd like to thank the Chamber for the work they did on that. Anything else about this, about this application?
I had, excuse me, but I had asked Meg to just reach out to them and do a little bit of analysis, and I think she included in your packet. You know, it's definitely a huge economic impact, maybe not quite as much as Mr. Parsons had expected, but either way, I think it's a good investment.
I agree. But he's not the only one that does that when they give them the amount of money that he's going to bring into town. If he has a will amount, he might not give it, or he might give it. So he runs it up the list, that's just, everybody knows, that's just the game we all play. But there's really no way to judge how much money it actually brings in, because they spend money on different things that we have no way of judging that they spend it at. Sure. Unkind baggage is really, every time I run across one, I send them unkind baggage first. And once they go, once they keep going. So, again, it is a good thing. Sometimes I question things, I don't even question this one, because I think anytime we can bring a whole bunch picking the town, they stay from one, two days to a week, and they stay in our town, they buy stuff, they do things, we can't go wrong. And we need to be a part of helping, because I think it's a good thing.
But if we don't do it, I think we're ending up losing a lot of those tournaments.
Oh, yeah.
It's not anything we need. We'll put this on next week's agenda. Next is to discuss new code or ordinances for the city of Scottsboro, Ms. Phillips.
You have in your packet the ordinance to adopt the official code for the city of Scottsboro. We started this process back in February, end of February of 2017, so we're about 13 months, and the timeline is probably 15 months, so we're still within that. Basically, the changes just included, municipal went through, our ordinances recognized any that were in conflict with each other, any that were obsolete, any that made it unconstitutional, and resolved those, and most of the updates just reference state code now. There's no reference of ordinances, and it's covered by the code. So, we also updated and adopted the, or when you pass this ordinance, it will adopt the most recent over 11th edition. And this will be available on our website and municipal website after the thing gets adopted.
Mr. Kimmer, you have anything to add?
Ms. Phillips covered it very well. She has worked exceptionally hard and should be commended for all the work that she has done in putting this together. It involved going through every ordinance cities ever passed. Lots of them were. We don't have a public will. We don't have a problem with the vagrants hanging out at the train depot anymore. The passenger train depot, because there's not been a passenger train depot in Scottsboro in 50 years. Lots of obsolete ordinances, lots of ordinances that are now covered by state statute. There's no need for us to have a public intoxication ordinance, it's just state public intoxication law. You know, it just simplifies things, makes everything constitutional, makes the system, I think, a whole lot more manageable. It makes the whole code available to the services only.
Mr. Phillips?
She, she said in her talk that most everything is covered by state law. My question is, what about those things that aren't covered by state law? One of the ones that she said most are covered, that means not all of them are. Well, we have to, if it changes, what's there now?
Our ordinance that was in place will remain in place.
It found where there was some duplication in different areas, consolidated, and I guess cleaned everything up.
So, the bottom, the end result is that we will vote to approve this?
Yes, sir.
So, if you can't see it until it's on the line, and that kind of like, you can read it after you pass it.
No, sir, you got a copy, I think. I put it right there.
Here you go.
Well...
But I'm saying, look at it, I mean...
And I had that question, Mr. Smith. Is there something that shows the changes that happened there?
Email the press to the council on October 30th. The press, the...
It's like a lined out, lined out edition, you know, so you can, you know, kind of scan through and see.
I think the people besides municipal people who've read this whole thing on this document somehow. But you're, you're not adopting anything that wasn't already there. You're getting rid of some things that were unconstitutional or had no purpose.
I just, frankly, I doubt if I'm going to have time to sit down and read it, I would have. I thought if I made something to show what the changes are.
Well, and I think this films is saying a lot, too.
But they hadn't done all this, didn't they?
Yeah, they have, they may have a final draft copy that's lined out of the changes. Can you send that out to the council?
Yes.
White copy.
I'm sure it did a great job, and I'm sure, and I know from Fulham, this ordinance is already here, many years. Some of them are very vague, and some of them probably could have got us in trouble because no one usually go after them. So it needs to be done. I agree with that, but I just, that's a lot to put your name on, not even. If she, if she could put out this one, which is the time changes, where...
I'm just going to do it, either way.
We'll put it on next week. Next is to discuss boards for cemetery department. Mr. Kimmer, you want to talk about that?
Uh, yes. Couple of years ago, Benny traded in his old mowers and got three new mowers. He had gotten prices on three, and then he had gotten a price for a zero turn. What we're asking for, excuse me, is two of the tractors he is trading in, replacements, and get a second, just one zero turn, which would give him two, two and two. And so you can see, and then he's getting, he is getting more money on trade-in than he did two years ago. Got $1,500 a mower. Two years ago, they're giving us $1,750 per mower trade-in this time. So the total for the three mowers comes to $12,500 for the cemetery department.
Any questions, discussion?
Is it working out? Or we haven't, I mean?
We were up here, you have that in the cemetery, it'd be a budget then? Don't have that in the cemetery budget at this time?
No.
They do an outstanding job.
Well, they're, with the drainage, they picked up some more area to mow as well.
We'll set that for next week. Move the delegations. Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir. Let me pass out these drawers to you, if you don't mind, I'll leave them front of you, so that left and right will be the same thing for everybody. All right, I'm here on behalf of Patrick Lumber and Patrick Investment Company relating to Stonebridge subdivision. What you were looking at, on the left end, it doesn't show on here, is Highway 72. And if you're looking about the middle, going left and right, you'll see Bowery Road. Below that, you'll see Cimarron. Below that, you'll see Kingwood. And below that, you'll see Larry Drive. Patrick Lumber and Patrick Investment created these subdivisions, and the initial subdivision plat was recorded in 1984. And that covered the area from your left on Bowery Road all the way down to a street called Jeremie, which is a cross street running top to bottom. In 1989, they did Cimarron running from your left to Jeremie. That's when they recorded the plat there, and then the work, of course, began immediately after that. In 1993, they did the portion from Jeremie going to your right over to where Bowery Road makes a 90 degree turn. Now, back in 89, when they were doing all the prep work and all of that stuff for the Cimarron area, which became developed their houses there. They also did work on the Kingwood and Larry Drive. They did preliminary road work. They had water and sewer utility lines installed in those roads, which back then was where they were to be put. At some point in time, there was an electric line that runs down Kingwood and then goes to the bottom of your page over to where Larry Drive would be. Now Larry Drive, there is an existing Larry Drive, which is right on the left side, and so the extension of that street would have been the Larry Drive you see running along the bottom. Now, what they're concerned about is this, that subsequent subdivision regulations relating to curbs and gutters were passed. And Patrick's position is that because of the work that was done before those regulations were ever passed, that these areas, which are Kingwood and Larry Lane, should, they should be able to develop them under the same guidelines that Bowery Road and Cimarron were developed under. And there are no curbs and gutters there. In fact, most of Scottsboro doesn't even have curbs and gutters. The street that runs between here and the back, if you go for two blocks, there's gutters, and if you go for the next three or four blocks all the way to the cemetery, there's not. And if you just out and ride around and look all over town. The problem that is created here is this. The homes in this area could be classified, I guess, as probably middle-class homes. They're not the big houses that you find someplace in Scottsboro. And the biggest single problem is that the extra expense of curbs and gutters in a subdivision like this does not increase the value of that at all. Obviously, most people in Scottsboro don't care about curbs and gutters, because most places in Scottsboro don't have them. And people live all over town. So what happens is that a developer is hamstrung in that if they've got to put out great expense to create that, they can't pass that on. Or if they try to pass that on, the natural people who would be the clientele for those homes are not going to pay the price that has to be charged. Now, that's the primary focus. There may be other subdivisions that date back like this one does, where the same situation exists. We're not here for that, but the thing is that what Patrick is asking is that there be a grandfather clause where in a situation like Stonebridge, they can develop the ballots of Stonebridge in the same manner that they developed the first part of Stonebridge. Now, if you have any technical questions, I'm going to... I've been talking ahead, so now I would defer to the guy who knows more about it.
And, Mr. Williams, for David, I've got years of minutes from where you've gone to the planning commission in, I guess this is 2009, and made a request, but they were, I guess they're, I haven't had time to really go through this in detail, but they did give you an allowance on the sidewalk at that time, but not the curb and gutter. Is there any curb and gutter out there, David?
No.
Is there digits, digits in where these lots would be?
Well, there are...
What's the drainage system?
Yeah, the drainage system is somewhat intact, but it's been not used in so long that it's only addressing like we normally would do, creating roads.
We're going to make a copy of this and supply it to the council if you don't mind. Mr. Kimmer, can I ask you what the process would be?
Well, we have a situation where it's been fourth since 2009. I'm confident that the circumstances have changed. I know that ordinance has changed since 2009. I think you would be incumbent on the property unit to go back to the planning commission and ask them what like to allow grandfather, to change the rules to allow grandfather. I'm not sure there is a grand father clause in the ordinance or in the rules. That gets the process started. They could then make a recommendation to the council whether, A, it needed to be done, or B, they didn't think it needed to be done, and the council could take appropriate action
How many lots are in this, Mr. Patrick?
There's approximately, will be 80, at least 80 lots, in some cases, but done in phases like we've done in the past.
The construction would be similar to what's in place?
Yes, and the building restrictions and whatnot would be a mirror of it.
Patrick, how many, how many people do you think work on a house between putting a shovel up the ground and turning the key in the lock?
Well, I think there's kind of a national average, probably 40 to 50. It depends on the house, on the amenities in the house.
One thing that I think would be a factor that would relate particularly to this one is that this is a large area right here in the middle of the city, close to, to most everything. And I don't know where the Blueberry people are going to live, and I don't know where the Balfour people are going to live, but I would think there's a lot of people who would be affiliated with those, who would need housing of this height. And there's not many places that I'm aware of this convenient to everything as this is. And so I think, I think it's a factor, because jobs are important, but if somebody's going to have a job, they also got to live somewhere.
I would suggest that, as Mr. Kimmer says, that you go before the, would they go before the planning commission?
It wouldn't hurt at all for them to go before, because I think any citizen can go before the planning commission, the planning commission. And if the council was so inclined for the council to join in the plans, the planning commission, I directly mentioned the council concerns.
I said that in the board session, across this discussion.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So, Louis, I'm going to set it for a work session for us to have council discussions on this, on this matter. I would also advise you to go through the process of approaching the planning commission, and we can see what the concerns are. I have had some remedial conversations with Mr. Lyke, and I'm a little concerned with drainage back there, and I think there are some ways to control that. One of the things we're working on is drainage systems within the city. Our topography makes things somewhat of a, somewhat of a challenge sometimes.
Let me say this, if I said what you said correctly, if any of you feel that there's merit to this, and if any of you were inclined to join in in front of that, and maybe have that up on all the procedures, then we would certainly welcome that.
I'm going to set this for a work session in two weeks, and we'll have some, we'll have some discussion.
Is there any reason you would want to be here, or is it that we just are not?
Have I touched base with me? Let me talk to the council members individually, and I'll get back to you.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to ask Josh, next, planning commission meeting.
The next one's, the first is in April, but we need something this big to basically get on that.
First Tuesday. All right, first week in April. First Tuesday is the next meeting in April.
April 3rd.
That's the way I would mention it.
But you would need something this week to the planning commission, be on that.
I was supposed to give a three-week notice to have it run in the paper, so we're up against the deadline right now.
Do you believe you made that to John, or to you?
No.
Do you? Okay. Do we meet that deadline, or do we make more sense of late than mine? Sometimes hurry up, and it's not good.
At least get the discussion on that.
If we talk a few more, I think we're all right. Thank you all very, very much.
I have one more question. Mr. Patrick, when you put, when you develop those lots, how does that affect your, affect your property taxes you pay on that property?
Well, it goes from, probably is by now agricultural acreage, or something like that, in that price range. And then, of course, once it goes to a lot, it has the developer value that this is, and then, of course, once a home's built on it, it goes up the roof.
I would think, based on Google search, houses of that type probably would carry tax bills of $500 to $700 a year.
I know I live on the corner, mine's over $800 a year.
What's the average price of a home you're expecting to build, not counting the lot?
I would guess around, not counting the lot, anywhere from, I would say minimum $150, and depending on what somebody wants, you know. I would think that would be the bottom of it.
For preparation for the board session, can you ask a question? Sure. About how many feet above the front roof of these lots, no, no, I know you don't, it won't matter.
Well, the ones that are joining it, it looks like about 150, maybe.
150 feet?
100 to 120, if I see.
I can, I think I see.
If my eyes are perfect.
The lots will be about, I think, they're in a basically square, I would think.
More rectangle than they are square. Looks like about 140, 150. Now, corner lots, of course, the actual portion on is about the same, but with the byway, it makes it appear quite bigger.
Say, just a middle, most houses, not counting corner houses, about 150 feet. And you're talking basically, give or take, and you're talking 150,000 or so. How much would it cost to do curbs better and not sidewalks, just curbs better for that 150 feet, basically?
Well, it gets into, I don't know if to answer your question exactly, we have had to figure it out in the past at the planning commission, a good while back, but the problem we got on this is the roads, the subbase is already there, and with curb, you have to create steam for water to get out of the curb, you know, it would, the road is brown to go to the ditch. So if curbs are put in, then you've got to elevate the road, kind of like a roller coaster a little bit, to make that water go to the next, to the drop zone. These were not built like this, and to build them like that gets in more than just the concrete you see. Plus, it gets into the backside of the curb, creating, and I don't know how close the ditch is to, on each side of the road, it's to where the backside of the curb would be, if you keep running curb and leave it exposed, there has to be a backfill. Is it about two feet? It's about 24 inches off that, so it's kind of like, you know, you're building a house and you're three-fourths of the way through it and decide to change everything. It's a lot, it's a lot more technical and common sense to build a paper.
When you, when you have a lot part, figure it out.
I don't remember, actually, I really don't. It's, it's not just the concrete, you can see what I'm saying, there's a lot of other things that go along with the engineering.
You know, I've had, I was on the planning commission for about eight years, so it's been a while now.
You know, I've had, I was on the planning commission for a while, eight years or so, been on a lot of, and, and we had a lot of this come on, and I had several conversations with, with Ed Biser, uh, street department. And every one of the conversations with him, he's, he said that he never has to do any work on the, on the ass curbing there. But the ones that don't have, which is a lot, we're always doing work, whether it be cleaning out the ditches, whether it be asphalt breaking and, and coming apart on the edges, uh, just all kind of issues, so.
God, this is what I have seen over there, is, uh, open ditches are allowed behind the curb, carry water. If there was a curb there, you don't have to put on a granite tile everywhere, which would be another huge expense. But in many cases, I've seen where the, the, uh, street department's truck that picks up debris and, you know, like limbs and whatnot, creates a little place, like a pond, I think it's with shag, and it's kind of a swimming pool or something like that. And that's from repetitive weekly stops of picking up, uh, limbs or not. And if, you know, if the shoulder is killed correctly, I don't see how it would be, that would be a problem. Uh, I mean, Highway seventy-two doesn't have curbs on it, and of course, it's probably two different things, I understand, but we don't have the traffic it has to.
Of course, it's built differently.
It is built, everybody's built.
And you do see edges crack off of seventy-two as well.
I'm just, I'm just curious of the.
No, the curbs, you know, curbs over time, that they do shift somewhat, curbs over time will shift. I've, I've seen that happen at the joints, there'll be, you know, they'll, they'll do this, like the sidewalks have around town.
I just wanted to know, yeah, so I can kind of think about some of those things before we get.
Well, I will have those numbers hopefully tomorrow. Uh, the person I've had working on this, uh, wasn't able to get to his information to dissect the curb, the sidewalk, not doing it, and then I should have it, if I can, touch them tomorrow.
I think that'd be a big issue with the city, uh, both planning commission and council, is to, if not putting curb, then if they're costing the city money, effectively forever. It was something we need to think about, but, uh, that's one thing. We're having this work session, talk about that.
You know, the cross, the cross streets also will be running with the ones out there now, they don't have anything, you're going to have a curb coming halfway and sitting up, just going to look a little bit.
David, I, I think it'd be beneficial to see some of those numbers up in the council. Is there any way you should get that, get that to us before the next work session?
Yeah, I hope they can have it this week, if not tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Logan.
Thank you all.
We'll move to reports, Mr. Mayor?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Logan? Mr. Stewart?
We had, uh, grand opening ceremonies at Veterans this past weekend, after, uh, leading a little T-ball team, and, uh, for some great welcoming, uh, speakers. But, uh, in all seriousness, the, uh, the elation and happiness on those, uh, little kids' faces, you won't ever be able to take those away. They were so excited to be at the opening ceremonies and see something. I was talking to them, and when I was, you know, a long time ago, when I was a little kid, played there, uh, the, uh, and they had this little medal, they were wondering, you know, what they would do with it, and I said, put it up, because one day it's going to be my age, and, you know, he'll say, I was there on opening day, and something that I couldn't say, so. Uh, but they were really excited. I know we have a lot of tournaments scheduled for the summer there, that'll be a economic, economic impact. And, uh, I'm just happy that it's just about a hundred percent complete. And want to thank Roy, uh, for, for all the work that they did out there, and the electric power board as well, everybody. Jim Ollney, I know you brought him up, um, while you were there, but there's a lot of people that, that helped out, that probably won't get recognized as much as they probably should, but, um, I appreciate what everybody did, looking forward to playing there.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Mr. Gary Stewart?
Well, I'd just really like to echo what Patrick was saying, um, I've had the good fortune to travel to a lot of ballparks all over North Alabama, and South Tennessee, and even some in Florida, but, uh, I think it's, um, I think it's just nicer, nicer than any that I've seen, and I'm really proud of it. I, this is coming from someone who worked there as a kid at the old complex. I worked there, I mean, years when I was growing up, and, uh, spent a lot of time there. But it was definitely neat and faces, and it looks really nice, and I think it's something Scottsboro should be really proud of. And so, and so I have things to come tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Mr. Smith?
Yes, uh, I'm, uh, when, when do we plan on, uh, rebidding or letting bids on the, the mowing contract? Who would have it, Mayor, or?
Mr. Smith?
It's, she had a pretty big conference, uh, the other day, I'm not sure.
Friday.
Friday, and I think.
Thursday.
Thursday. Excuse me, and bid up, and it's, but this Friday?
This Friday.
It'll be reviewed and, and at some point brought to the council.
Is it the same, are we bidding exactly the same thing we did before?
Uh, exactly the same. I think it's the same with maybe a couple other options for them to give us a price of.
I was curious, so.
I believe I don't.
Is he going to involve more money?
I don't know, that's one of the bids.
Well, I mean, if it's more items, it's got to be more money, I mean, they would do it for free.
When we get the bid, we'll see.
Well, I'm just curious.
Sure.
Uh, we're, but, so, it comes to council, I think, y'all.
Yes, sir.
We talked about it.
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, second, uh, does anyone have any idea what we're going to do with those country, uh, ditches that came off the square? And we did this, I understand some of the street departments, uh.
Some were, then they're, we walked the trail.
Will we use them some?
Yes.
Are we going to use all of them?
Uh, some of them broke up.
Yeah.
They picked up the forklift. I, I don't know how many are out there.
I just wonder if we're going to get them, or if we're going to donate some on, or if we're going to use them, I don't know.
Yeah.
Eddie, how many are out there?
I think there's five out there, uh, later.
Actually, hadn't thought a lot about those.
Would you think about it?
Sure.
Talk about it next time? Thanks, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Um, I've already talked about the English choice, I was, uh, encouraged to see, to see participation there. Uh, and I, I too will, will say I enjoyed being at the ball field this weekend. That, that was a culmination of a long journey that we've, uh, that we've been on. Um, I think that it's a facility that we can be proud of, as I said Saturday. I consider it a foundation for our, for our community. And I'm excited to see what we as a community do with that facility. It, uh, it provides some, not only advantage, but some opportunity for us. Um, my prayer is that the, that the, the players or the youth that were on the field will someday be in the stadium. I hope we can, uh, can begin a process of keeping our young people here and making this an attractive community to water stadium. And we keep, uh, we keep maintaining that. Uh, that's all I've got, uh, we'll stand in recess until next week, thank you.